So, go to 6.1, Correspondence, Second Annual Business of Business Expo, September 20th, 2017. Information or discussion? Counselor Casey?
Thank you, Worship. I would move it for discussion and place the motion on the floor. As requested, that we confirm our participation at the, I guess, conference.
Okay, second of that, Counselor Kai. Any discussion on it? On favor? Six point two, something like, um, held in communication several weeks. Counselor Casey?
For information, Worship.
I'd like to have a discussion. There is an issue. I won't be able to make this. I was just wondering if we, somebody from council could make this complication.
That is when FCM's on?
Okay, thank you. Okay, six point three, the ATV Club firm out. Information discussion.
Counselor Hall, discussion?
Okay.
So just wondering if staff as such has to take a look at this and review any of the information that was said.
We have taken a look. We sat down and spoke with the president of the ATV Club. Most of what's being pointed out here is simply trails that haven't been built yet that the ATV Club had committed to us to build. The other issues, we can't, um, we can't find what is being mentioned in this letter. So, what I would suggest to council is, on something like this that was developed in conjunction with the ATV Club RCMP, council and staff, and if we're going to be looking at opening this up again, it should be done with the cooperation of the ATV Club, which is expressed to myself and to council at the open house that they are in support of this.
I gotta say that the RCMP are, have a meeting with council and ATV Club, and talk about what they can do and what they're trying to do. So, that was the last discussion I had with Sergeant. If that's coming, we can maybe check with them and see if we can book it sometime.
Is this something that would warrant be putting, like, on a PNP?
Um, well, it could be, yeah, but it would have to be when Sergeant, um, Bailey is ready to do it. He was checking into some, what it, how he can do different things.
And did he give us a timeframe of when he might have an answer?
I could get Mr. Wall to get in touch with him and see if he could run some, something.
Okay. Yeah, because it seems to have come to kind of a stall, and it would be nice to see everything finalized.
Counselor Hall? And myself, I'd rather see us come together for a user group meeting like we did when we first put this bylaw, uh, some of the work on the bylaw together, rather than do it at a PNP. I think it's more, you get more input from the RCMP and from the ATV Club than you would at a PPC meeting. So, I think that worked a lot better. There was a lot better conversation. So, myself, I'd rather see it done like that, again, get all the groups together when Sergeant fail is ready to go, and we'll make his acquaintance.
Okay.
It worked good last time that way, so, yeah. So, Mr. Wall, that's okay with you? Forty, seven point one, fees, fees and charges by law number 623, 2017. Recommendation? Counselor Kirby?
That the District of Tumbler Ridge fees and charges by law number 623, 2017 be adopted?
Okay. Okay. Discussion?
Counselor Hall? Are there any highlights in here that council should be aware of, of any massive changes or any user groups that might be affected? Is this just a, like, a two or three percent increase? That's...
Mr. Wall?
Uh, the highlights would have been contained in the staff report, which was provided for the first two readings. There aren't too many changes in here. You'd be looking at the golf course being mainly the only one, and I think maybe the RV park had changes as well.
Okay. But stuff like the, uh, like the curling rink and the hockey arena and stuff like that, that stuff is basically the same? Or is it just a small increase? As I don't remember the previous one, that's why I masked it.
Yeah, it's either the same or a small increase.
Okay. Thanks.
Counselor, your conference?
Thank you, Worship. So this one, and it's with Monkman RV Park, so it's $30.48 to spend a night from April to October. But if you stay, it's a long stay, so 14 plus nights, it drops down to $17.14. Is that, is that, like, I mean, I've, I see a discount. Seen that you give discounts? How much we discount? That's been the normal way that we've done Monkman RV Park.
I don't know the history of the charges. I don't think, again, that there was many changes. But council, this is your fee and charges by law. You don't want to offer that amount of a discount. Can we make changes?
Most of the prices I got, come up with by canvassing other communities, I think.
There's so many different prices in here. I'd have to know which one, and I don't know how the Monkman RV price was set.
Get that? Counselor Kai?
Yeah, they were, they were lowered when, um, during the upswing, the last upswing, or, sorry, yeah, yeah. Because we people staying in there for maybe three months. So they approached, uh, contracting, uh, to have that lowered maybe. And they brought out, uh, different, um, costs from, even on the island, and so it kind of brought it down to that level. That's the issue.
And then, like, the $17 a night, uh, for 14 nights, like, if you look at that over a month, it's just over $500 for a month. That would be my concern. I don't know if that's where you're going with it, if, are we competing with rental properties and people that are trying to rent them? To me, I think that's a pretty fair number for, you know, we're probably getting good power and stuff like that, really, it's making money on it. So, I think it's a pretty good deal if we keep them in there.
Hey, all in favor? Okay. New business, eight point one, special capital levy. Recommendation there? Okay.
I'd like not to make that recommendation. As a second, the alternate recommendation I'd like to put on the floor is to, uh, to stay with option one, which is a, is a non-two percent increase of the levy.
Second to that? Counselor Kirby? Discussion?
Well, I actually sat down with Mr. Wall and came up with another alternative that, that may work as well. And I'd like to float that one by council during this discussion, and we can vote on yours and then look at this one after. But an idea that I came up with, I was looking at the, uh, tax rates for 2016. If you go to page number thirty-six, and you look at our, uh, major industry, so for 2016, the tax rate was 82.2168. And for our budget for 2017, we've got it set at 76.87. So we've got about a five percent decrease in the mill rate. And I know that we normally decrease the mill rate when we increase the assessment, so that we get the same amount. But the assessment on this one has come down almost $25 million, and that's due primarily, I think, to the loss of Peace River Coal. So if we kept the mill rate the same for the remaining major industries, so we don't increase their mill rate, we just keep it the same at 82.2168 as compared to the 76.8700, 07, that would make us approximately $190,000 to $200,000. So that, instead of pushing that off to our residents to try to recoup some of the money that we lost from major industry, we've then put it back on major industry, and we're not increasing their taxes. We're leaving their mill rate the same. And there's been such a decrease, and what has happened, it changed around. That's, that's not our fault, how it, how the assessment value comes in. But we're not increasing it to major industry as well. We're keeping it the same. So we're in line with supporting the Kanumas and the CNRLs and those of the world. We're not increasing theirs. We're just going to keep it the same. I don't see where that justifies a decrease of, of five percent, so. And that, I discussed this with Mr. Wall and, and Saunders as well. And that's what they kind of said that would work as well. There is some stuff that would have to be changed. We'd have to bring a couple of things back and change what we had talked about, I think, on our February ninth meeting or whatever. But it's an alternative to the option, rather, taxing the residents an additional two percent, because to me, that's what, that, that is. That's just increase in their residential taxes by two percent, which we said in that previous meeting that we were not going to do, so. So I'll be voting against the option to, uh, to do the increase for the financial, but I can vote yours if we can look at doing this one. Was that long-winded or what?
That would come up later here.
I don't know how that would work for option one or option two. I guess it's a completely another idea to look at, but.
Mr. Wall?
If council wants to go down that path, which you can, what we would need to do is, um, we could support Counselor Grupka's motion. I can't, I think council needs to debate that, but if, to, to make a change that's not listed in these reports, what we'll need to do is defeat everything that's in here. We'll need to go back and recreate a new budget. We'll need to bring it to council. We need to have two meetings to get, uh, make sure we get a final readings before May 18th. May 18th. So that's what we'd have to do. We'd go back, we'd make the financials, and we'd schedule two special meetings.
Anybody else?
I mean, based on this discussion, does, does staff still go with this recommendation as before us?
Mr. Ross?
This is the recommendation as per KPMG's core service review.
And I know I, I've been talking, uh, uh, two percent, uh, cost of living increase to, to taxes, and, uh, and I imagine that is spread around two percent, I think. But, uh, and I haven't had anybody, uh, one person say they didn't think that was a good idea. You know, I'm talking about residents. I don't know. I, I, I think, I can't see a problem with the two percent. And, uh, I'd be, I'd be voting for the two percent. Counselor Kirby?
Yeah, I, I'm not in favor of two percent increase in the residential. So that's why I put the motion of, uh, of option one on, no two percent increase of the capital levy. Definitely support that motion, and I like the, the idea Councilor House come up with and spoke about, so I'd support that.
Counselor Casey?
Thank you, Worship. Is there a motion on the floor at the moment?
Yes, it's...
The one that's stated here with the two percent?
No. Uh, no, it's the option two that doesn't charge the two percent.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? Well, do you want to read this out again?
So the motion right now would be, uh, to not implement a two percent special capital levy.
Okay. All favor of that? Opposed?
No.
Helen, what do you have?
I'm opposed to the two percent levy.
She's in favor of the motion.
Favor of the motion. So it passes.
How did you come up with, with council? How was this talking, going in regards to, like, we have to have a motion on the floor for that? Go back to you?
Um, so you, you said that we have to defeat the budget?
So, with no motion on the floor right now, council could take up the motion, and I would suggest that we, that staff prepares tax and, um, financial plan bylaws to include an 82 point, is it 86.2?
Just T the same.
Yeah, 82.2.
One, six, eight.
Yeah. And a, a major industrial tax rate.
Okay.
So that, the motion would be that staff prepares a tax by law and financial plan by law to maintain the same major industrial tax rate as 2016.
Yep, sounds great.
Counselor Grupka, second, second to that. Any discussion on?
So, and when we come back to this, will staff be able to give us a better estimation of that number that we, we discussed? You know, we thought somewhere in that $190,000 to $200,000 we'd be able to collect?
When we come back, you'll have the exact numbers, and it'll carry all the way through both the tax by law analysis and the financial plan by law analysis. But I just want council to be aware, we are now at the point that when we come back with this time, if we aren't able to pass it at that point, uh, we're going to be in trouble looking at the deadlines and the amount of time we have back, because it's going to take a couple of days to do this, and we're going to have to schedule the meeting, do three readings, schedule another meeting. And just so council's aware, we've got enough time to do this. I don't want to put any fear in anybody. But if at that point it doesn't pass, if we don't get our tax rate bylaws and financial plan bylaws passed by the 18th, we lose our ability to collect taxes. Fifteenth, sorry. Uh, we lose our ability to collect taxes for the year, so.
Problems? Get it done then.
As long as council gives a quorum, we'll have this one completed, so not to worry.
Okay. Any more discussion on this? On favor? Both? So that will eliminate eight point two and eight point three?
Today? That's correct.
That's eight point four. Recommendation? Okay.
Council approves the payment cooperation method for Bergeron, Merritt, Chamberlain, Chamberlain Place, Setio Place, Alston Place, Myon Place, Eker, Meekle, Supernaut, Bellport, and the city center parking lot for the estimated 4.6 million.
Second, or? Discussion?
Just want to confirm that that does pave every road in the lower bench.
That's correct. It will, it, well, let me be more specific. It will pave the two main streets of Bergeron and Speaker, along with any connecting street. So, what we would refer to as the lower bench, yes.
Okay.
So, I don't have a question. I just have comments. I attended the meeting that, um, Mr. Wall set up, and thank him for his input and, and, and urban systems for their input. They discussed it on the table at council, just, you know, thinking of different ideas and everything else. So I just want to say hats off to you guys coming with that. That is an idea, is a recommendation from, from staff as well. We're all about paving, uh, in 2017. I guess, listening to that, to, to urban systems and staff, I think it's, it's the best way to go for this, this time around.
When we, when we discussed, uh, this earlier, the big paving, and come up with three, something, some million, how does that affect the budget now that it's at 204.6? Is that, that, was that already included in this, uh, previous budget, Dirk?
So right now, we're budgeted for four million. This would need to be an increase of what we budgeted.
Had that just come out of reserves?
That would come out of reserves, that's correct.
I do have one question on this as well.
Go ahead.
Um, sidewalks. Does that include redoing the sidewalks if it's needed?
Mr. Wall?
There'll be limited repairs of sidewalks.
Okay. And then this isn't where we would, like, if we wanted to extend sidewalks in areas where they should be and they're missing, we wouldn't be able to do this at that same time, would we?
We could have, but at this point, it's getting too late to make major changes like that.
Yeah, no, I, I think that was an over, like, we've kind of missed that, but, um...
Well, having said that, I shouldn't say, it would, it would delay the release of the tenders, and at this point, if we start making delays like that, we're going to be risking not getting in at the right time.
Okay. No, thank you.
Anything else? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, eight point five, core services review, implementation plan, 2017. Any? Counselor Casey?
Remove the recommendation as presented, Your Worship. Move for information.
Information, second on that? Counselor Kai? On favor? You okay with that, Counselors? How? I mean, uh, Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Uh, it's eight point six, Tumbler Ridge Golf and Country Club, 2017 operations, restaurant and lounge. Let me skip this off. Okay, we have a recommendation? Counselor Kirby?
That administration enters into lease negotiations with Debcar Ventures as per the expression of interest closing April 21st with the Tumbler Ridge Golf and Country Club restaurant lease.
Second, or? Okay, discussion? All in favor? Both? You have, uh, got it. We'll be back in a second. Okay, um, rate rural residential lots, recommendation there?
Counselor Hall? Just before we go into the recommendation, I just want to confirm something with, uh, with staff there. And I apologize for not being able to get a chance to come down and talk to you about it, uh, but when we were talking about this, we were talking about switching from one scenario to another, and then it seems like we've come back to the scenario, the original scenario that we had. Is that correct?
That's correct. So staff's recommendation hasn't changed, but if you'll notice on page five of the agenda, under eight, uh, number eight, it notes that council of previous PNP expressed desire to switch from scenario three as previously approved to scenario two. So scenario two is where council is discussed for.
Counselor Kirby?
I'd like to make a recommendation that the district pursue scenario two focusing resources. Oh, saw it. Wait one second, I got... Goes forward with the scenario two. End it there.
That is, that is where? What page did you say?
Page five. It's in page five of our agenda. Page top number eight. Page five, if I... We have the Bears motion.
Mayor?
Double back.
Does it lay out what scenario two is?
Over...
120, Worship.
Okay, there you go. Scenario two is presented.
Do I get a second or that?
Yep.
Okay, discussion?
So, again, I'm a little confused here. I thought the district or staff wanted us to go, or staff wanted scenario three. Then we had a discussion at the PNP that we wanted to go to scenario two. So then why would the recommendation come back that we go to scenario three? How's that for confusing? If we wanted two, why would we, why would the recommendation be three?
Well, because, well, staff's not here to just provide the recommendations that council wants to hear. We're here to provide you our, our best advice, or our best advice is scenario three, but we do have the alternative of scenario two here for you.
And with scenario two, from what I remember at our P, PNP, was that we wanted to investigate the costs. We didn't say, go out, buy this land, and it was just, get, get us some options, get us some ideas, find out where the costs are. And that's what we want, that's what will happen in scenario two. So we'll only, yes, we're going to spend some staff time and a bit of staff labor to, to, to look at this. But it's not actually to take the leap to go out, buy crown land at this point. It's to look at this part.
That's correct. So we, we'll, it'll be staff time, there'll be some engineers involved, so there will be some money spent on it. But what we'll be doing is bringing back to council, uh, some options, so we'll be looking at it. And this will take more time, because I want council to be aware, we're not going to be going out and just saying, here's the cost of land to buy. Here's the cost of land to buy. Here's what the requirements that are going to be on the district. Here's what we think the costs are going to be in bringing it to market. And we'll give you, uh, we'll give council some options, what those costs are in a couple of different areas, and council at that time can determine. So, um, as you can see in this motion, there's no money attached to it, so we can't go and purchase anything, and we wouldn't without coming back to council. And so the timeline on this would be to get the information back to council, so you can make a decision for your budgeting process in 2018, whether or not you want to include these land purchases as part of it.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Schedule the meetings. You got anything to add or subtract? Mr. Wall?
We will need to schedule two special meetings here, uh, sometime, I would say concluding on the 10th, having the final reading. Does that, I don't know, concluding on the 10th? Concluding the final reading on the 10th would be, uh, the latest, I think we'd want to push this. So maybe if we could, would we have quorum? Because I know myself, Mayor McPherson, Counselor Mackay are going to be away, uh, starting tonight and not back till Friday. Would council be able to call in for a meeting, so we can get a quorum sometime this week?
I won't be available.
Okay. So what, what date are you talking on?
I was thinking we could do maybe Thursday. Okay, why don't we do the eighth and the 10th? Would that work for council?
Eighth is Monday, and the 10th Wednesday?
Yeah.
Would we be looking at five o'clock, or would it be earlier?
Whichever council prefers.
One thing we do have on the eighth is that, um, West Mobile Techico?
They're coming in at 11:00. If we did it in the morning?
Did it 10:00?
So 10:00 on the eighth and 10th? Okay, we'll get the notices out.
We do it later on the 10th? I've got a meeting in Boston on 10:00. So we do 5:00 on, on the 10th? You okay with everybody?
Earlier would be better. Anyway, when are you back from your meeting?
Back about, uh, probably 2:00.
2:00, it's better for my schedule.
2:00 works very good? Yes, 2:00.
So 10:00 AM on the eighth and 2:00 PM on the 10th?
Yeah. Yeah. Hey, um, anything else to go on this?
So this one, are we only doing one meeting in June?
That's correct.
Summer schedule? Stuff that comes up. Hey, um, strategic plan, is there anything on that?
When's the next time we can actually get together as a council to actually go over the strategic plan and see, you know, just do an update on it? Is there any flavor around council to do that?
I think that would be a great idea, what about the nineteenth, it's a Monday, like in June.
It's actually a fact there, I should, or actually, sorry, speaking, I'll tell you worship, scheduled for June.
Mr. Wald? It's up to council what you're, uh, looking for the meeting, if you're looking for an in, update on information on where we all are on those, um, that's June, and I actually might get pushed back to July just with everything that's been going on, if council's talking about getting together to discuss whether or not these are your strategic priorities, that can happen at any time.
Yeah, that's more along the lines of what I was looking for, there's for us to kinda have a look at our strategic plan now, definitely going forward for two thousand and eighteen to kinda square in on this, if this is actually our strategic plan or this is, you know.
So, just have to come up with a date to make sure everybody.
So you don't expect to give us an update on the fifth of where we're at then, Jordan?
I'll have to see, it's getting tight now.
That's a regular council meeting.
June nineteenth? Why don't we look at the nineteenth and that's the one that we, we're not having. Be, be okay, Mr. Wald?
Yeah, this would be council's, schedule whatever you prefer.
Are they gonna be giving us some information on this, or?
Uh, it'll be tight to get it into the June meeting, just with the, all the things that have been added here lately, it might, it might be pushed to July. However, if council did it at the July meeting, if you're looking for making decisions based on where we are on these projects, July meeting would be better in the, the later week of July, but again, if you're just getting together to talk about what your strategic plan is, um, you may not need a strategic plan update to move forward, it's, it's what does council wanna get over this meeting?
Perhaps, uh, can you attend the same meeting and, and just sit in on it, if there's any, you know, like, you may not have a proper report for us, but if we start heading down the wrong direction thinking this is not done yet, and it is, you can say, hey, that's just a move done, you know, would that be, is that date work for you?
Uh, yes, it does, yes.
That, that's what I was trying to think.
Yeah.
Could we just review what the, the dates of the meetings that we've disagreed upon?
I could send an email out to all of council if you like.
That'll do, thank you very much.
So the, the last one was June nineteenth at five PM? Is that correct?
Okay. I think this is the notice, notice of motion. There's, uh.
Recommendation, the council authorizes that a letter be sent to the Ministry of the Environment and the Conservation Office highlighting council's concerns for increased bear activity, resident safety, decrease in habitat, and that the time has come to set up a relocation and removal efforts in the book of the Tumler Ridge.
Second or? Okay, discussion on that? On favor? Vote? Second one? Second.
Uh, that staff prepare a report pertaining to the two thousand and seventeen bear season, including cost failures, successes for the Policies and Procedures Committee meeting being held November twentieth, two thousand and seventeen.
Okay, discussion? I think it's all good stuff.
All of that.
On favor? Okay, council business. Counselor Mackay?
No, nothing to report. Two things, one thing I was hoping we would have time here, when, uh, Ms. Peru was here, um, just so everybody's aware, she's, uh, taken on a division with the, with the District School Fifty Nine Division as a principal for the school District Fifty Nine, part-time, so she'll be part-time here and part-time at school District Fifty Nine as a principal in the regional office, so that's gonna give us a say here in town, our, our students and, uh, so it's good here, um, just talk to me, talk to me about it on Friday night, it's quite impressive, and so, the other thing is, is, you know, if we can just add this, I mean, it's, uh, I'm not sure if everybody's had a chance to read this letter, probably not, but it's this letter that, uh, after, uh, directed staff to write a letter, um, to ministry there in regards to Gwllam Lake, they've wrote this letter back, stating they're willing to meet us out on site to go over the parking, the boat launch, uh, the vehicle or traffic getting down there throughout the whole year, so I think it's something we should be jumping on, even though summer's here, it should be sooner than later.
Yeah.
I mean, that way, maybe they can, you know, they have a budget, they can set it in place and maybe put different gates in and, and be ready for docking for next year. I'm not sure if you wanna put gates on or what.
Uh, I'd, I'd like to see us do it early in May, May fifteenth, if we could, uh, before our council meeting, PCC meeting.
Mr. Wald, can you share, can you set that up first?
Yeah.
Thank you, Worship. Um, just wondering if we should invite, uh, Chetwin Council, if anybody interested to come out because.
Definitely, absolutely.
I guess we could go as far as Dawson too, because, I mean, that park use has, has gone from just solely Tumler to Tumler, Chetwin, Dawson, Grand Prairie, Fort St. John, but, I mean, just local, I know Chetwin, we've talked a lot.
Chetwin, for sure. We can send a letter out? Know what we're doing, once we get a bidding?
Also, uh, if you're at NCLGA coming up, I know that the Chetwin councils, we've talked about this before down there, so that could be something that you could set up a little chat with, so.
I know at least the mayor's gonna be there.
Yeah.
Okay. Good for you.
I attended that meeting here with Urban Systems on the paving options, and I just wanted to throw the rest of council in on, uh, that was one of the best meetings I've ever had with Urban Systems, uh, the lady that they brought down from Urban Systems really knew her stuff, and even the wild and crazy questions we could throw at her, she could give us some, uh, pretty good, uh, ideas if we were headed in the right direction, and, uh, she actually headed us off from probably making a real bad decision on something, I think, and, uh, with just a simple, uh, solution there, and it was, it was a great way to, to go through it, for sure, and, uh, just wanted to say that that was a really great meeting with Urban Systems, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Mayor McPherson, um, just like to say, I thought we had a very positive, um, open town hall meeting, um, I liked the, the topics, they weren't the same as, as usually yours, I, I was happy with the turnout, um, the, uh, GeoPark have, uh, elected a new board, um, I'll be happy to work with them for the upcoming year as liaison, um, also they're, they've also hired a program coordinator, and Northern Lights College has offered, uh, the coordinator a free, free space, so that's, that's, uh, that's great, um, some other news on the GeoPark, um, actually landing tonight, and will be here tomorrow, is a travel group, uh, called Lotus, and they're coming in, and they're checking out, um, just some tourism options, there's, they're Japan, South Korea, Taiwan, and China, that's, they're coming in, um, Ridge Roters have, um, donated a free, um, flight, so they will be going through the GeoPark tomorrow, and, uh, so this, this is a, a tourism potential for us, that's really great that, you know, I think the coordinator over there is doing a fantastic job networking, so Lotus will be flying people right into Va- Vancouver, and Lancy and Aaron Vancouver are looking at options of bringing them directly into Tumler Ridge and setting up tours, so, so this is gonna be something really exciting, I think, in our future, for sure, and that's it.
Counselor Casey?
Nothing to report, Your Worship.
Here, for me, I got a couple things from the PRD meeting, um, the GeoPark was there, um, looking for funding, and they were a little late, we've already done the budget and everything, but they did, uh, they were asking for ninety thousand, and they did come up with, um, pot there for thirty thousand that they could dedicate to that, so that's what the GeoPark got, but in the discussions about this, um, it was brought up that they are already funded the GeoPark for two hundred thousand a year, for years, and I said, no, that's the museum, and there was some confusion there with the museum and the GeoPark, so I suggested that, uh, I told them about the recommendation we'd made in, in January about the consolidation, or getting together, and, um, that it was voted down by the museum and the GeoPark was still looking at it, and they've asked for me to bring Jordan to give a presentation on this, uh, to, uh, to the board, and, uh, because they've got some concern right now, they, they, I think they're thinking along the same lines, that it's, they're, they're fairly close together, they might like to see them, you know, as, as one group when it comes to funding, because it is confusing for the board there, so, I think that's a good thing, so we'll, uh, Mr. Wald will be, uh, presenting sometime in the near future and, uh, see how that moves, we'll be up to date. The other thing, uh, on the NCLGA, uh, meetings here this, uh, this week, the, the Regional District Board is gonna be talking to our House Senator, needs to do the renovations, so they, they all agree that, uh, some should be done there, so, so we'll be talking to them and so will the Regional District, so that might give us a little more push, if you got the, what happens there too, and that's about it for me.
Thank you, Worship, just a, just a comment with regards to, uh, going to the Regional District meeting with regards to the GeoPark, uh, with Mr. Wald making a presentation there as well, I really believe, uh, that it is critically important that as many of us attend that meeting, that we can, that, that can make it, I think it's critically important, it makes a difference with people in the gallery, and I think in terms of not only the presentation that Mr. Wald will be making, but the, the number of people, including the GeoPark people, the rest of it and so forth, uh, I think that that will go a very long way with regards to adding support and just how serious we are relative to that particular initiative, I really believe that, so I would encourage that if we can organize something along that line, I'd love to see us all show up to that meeting, time to see it, uh, and provide that kind of support, I really would, it makes a difference.
Yeah, it does, and, uh, we will let everybody know, and, uh, I, I think Sarah kinda indicated that she might be willing to, to do that today, so, yeah, um, we will, uh, let everybody know, and, and, you're right, everybody there, it'd be great. Those, those are on Thursdays.
Have, have we had a vote or any discussion around council that that's the direction we wanted to go? That there was a vote on that, that we wanted to try to amalgamate them together, or ask them to amalgamate?
Sure, that's where we, how we got to that.
Just don't remember.
That's correct, I believe it was in January, council made the vote. Maybe I can connect with council.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, question and answer period. Questions? Take some answers? Thank you, um, yeah, we don't have a press anymore, I guess. Take me to, um, closed meeting. Second? On favor? And we'll take a break.